Permission, I'd like to invite some special guests into the chamber. This evening, we have past president of UMNB, Alex Sholton, executive director of UMNB, Dan Murphy, and longtime member of UMNB and a councillor for the town of Hampton, and also former mayor of Hampton, we have Mr. Chorley. So, welcome, gentlemen, and come to the podium, and please tell us why you're here.
Thank you.
To council, since 2004, the Union of Municipalities in New Brunswick was very fortunate to have a representative from Zone Three come from Kispemcys. And this year, we have one of your councillors stepping down from the association, and we wanted to take this time to thank Beth Thompson for her dedicated work to our association, her dedicated work to municipalities around the province, being on our board, being with our executive, and one of the representatives, our co-representative, Ken Chorley, from Zone Three. So Beth, we'd like to thank you so much for your efforts, your dedication to our association, and your dedication to municipalities across the province. And we have a presentation for you tonight.[96.36][96.36][applause]
So, Mr. Sholton, thank you for the kind words. I don't know, Ken, if you wanted to speak. I know you and Beth have travelled many years together, back and forth. Come to the mic, Mr. Chorley.
Thank you very much. Beth and I have been travelling to meetings together now for a long, long time. It started with the landfill commission, I think, back in the 90s, and for some reason, we kept sharing the drive back and forth to Frederickson. And this last time, last weekend, was probably the first time that I've driven up to Frederickson alone in a long, long time.[183.37][183.37][laughter] And it's a lot longer drive than you think it is when you don't have any gossip to talk about. So Beth, I've enjoyed every minute of it. I hope you enjoy your time off with your husband, and great, thank you.[197.01][197.01][applause]
Thank you very much, councillor Chorley.[201.01][201.01][applause] Okay, okay. Thank you, Dan, for coming. Thank you. Also, under the mayor's comments, I just wanted to thank the Kennepaces Valley Police, or sorry, Fire Department, for holding an open house this past weekend. It was well received by the community in the Kennepaces Valley, both from Kispemcys and Rosay. And people had the experience of climbing on trucks and using the hose and doing all kinds of interesting things that firefighters do. And I think there's a lot of wannabe firefighters in the near future. Also, this evening, we had dyslexia awareness, and we light up the front of the building with red because that is the colour for dyslexia awareness. And we had Abigail Crowley here this evening, with traits, and Leo Ralk. So I wanted to thank them for coming and for helping us become more aware of dyslexia. Moving on, councillor Thompson, would you mind doing the moment of reflection? Can you draw that up? Please?
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Kispemcys exists on the traditional territory of the Louis, Louis de Guay, Malacite, and McMack people, whose ancestors along Pasmaquoddy, Pasmaquoddy tribes signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. We would also like to take this moment to reflect on our solidarity and support of the people of Ukraine, acknowledging that Canada has the third-largest Ukrainian population in the world, behind Ukraine itself and Russia. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you very much, councillor Thompson. Looking for disclosure of interests. Seeing there are none, we'll go on to number five, presentations. This evening, we have with us a member from the PRUD Inc., which is Pride, Race, Unity, Dignity, and Education. And in attendance tonight, we have Brenda Diaz, from All Women Project Coordinator. And I think, if you wouldn't mind coming up and to the podium, and I believe Deputy Mayor Schreier wanted to make a comment.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Welcome, Brenda. I just wanted to comment, I have the pleasure of representing Kispemcys on the committee for the All Women's Project, and their meetings are very informative and lots to think about. And I thought it would be important that our council get to hear what I hear at the committee level and give you a high-level insight as to the important work that Ms. Diaz is spearheading. So welcome, and thank you for coming. And you have a colleague with you?
That is...
Thank you. Would you like to introduce her?
Yes, of course. From Nigeria, if possible. Newcomer Women Leadership Program.
Thank you very much.
So we are going to review a presentation about all the services and programs that we have at PRUD. It's kind of difficult to have a glimpse in just 10 minutes, but I will do my best because also I would like to provide the highlights of the project that Deputy Mayor is working on, and Mayor Levy as well, at the beginning. So, yes, please. Talking about PRUD, well, we have been here in this region, working for cultural diversity for four years. So probably, the next one, please? The best way to introduce PRUD Inc. is through two pillars, or in two separated aspects. The first one is the Canadian Way, that you can see on the screen, so is to increase the awareness about cultural diversity, but also working for integration into the society. So we receive newcomers every year, but we need to integrate it into the society. And we have programs specific for youth, conversational English classes, and as I mentioned before, the Women Leadership as well. Regarding this program overall, the Canadian Way, for example, the first one, that is the Come Together, the Canadian Way, is not only a conversational English class. We teach as well about the culture and the history of Canada and of this region as well. One of the topics that we cover in this curriculum is talking and having an introduction about the First Nations, so newcomers will learn about this. And in this program, it is not only in the classroom, we take all these students, all these participants, to different historical places that they will learn, and they will make the connections with the communities. This is customized for each group, so it is going to be changing all the time. And certainly, employment-related, because it's probably the first purpose of what we have newcomers here. And the other one that I would like to highlight is the Newcomer Women Leadership, is to teach some skills. The purpose is to teach new skills that newcomer women would need in Canada, is not to forget about the past skills in their home countries, is to learn new ones. And they do volunteer as part of the program, so they have to serve, and it's the best way to expand their network and also to have this Canadian experience that they would need, also to test their skills that they are learning through this cohort. The other part of this program is to have some visits, because obviously, they are learning about leadership, so they need to learn from businesswomen and also from community leaders. They learned different leadership styles, and also they learn about values and their vision. So they make them visible, and they expand their network. And the other part of the services that we offer at PRUD, the next one, please? This is just an overview about the Newcomer Women Leadership Program. The next one, please? The other part would be all our education programs that we have. And I would like to highlight only the first one, that is teaching at schools, and teachers as well, trainers. So as you can see, we have divided this into three, so valuing our differences for students and for teachers. And we have been doing this for 12 years, teaching over 31,000 students in all over this region. And the anti-racism education is mainly for the workplaces, but also the bridging cultural diversity training is more for organizations, governments, agencies, the staff at this council, For example, about the valuing our differences, they make one exercise in the classroom, to listen to different accents without seeing the pictures of or the photographs of the people, so the students will recognize their assumptions and their stereotypes. And also, they learn what can they do if they see discrimination, and what are the techniques and strategies to prevent discrimination as well. And the next one, please? This is the anti-racism education, and I just would like to highlight that this is to reform hiring and retention. So this is more a workshop, just a discussion based in the workplaces. Thank you, next one? About the PRUD All Women Project, well, this is funded by Women and Gender Equality Canada, and they wanted to see what are the barriers and the obstacles that women face in this community, mainly after the pandemic. So they created with PRUD this project. That is about to end by January 2024. And the purpose, as I mentioned, is to address and remove systemic barriers. So it sounds like a Titanic job, and that's why we need your help. We need to involve more stakeholders and decision-makers into the phase, into the implementation phase. The next one, please? Here you have just a glimpse about the purpose of the project. Next one, please? And the formats to participate, we want to be inclusive, so we have very different formats available, online, in person. We are going to nursing homes, schools, communities, et cetera, just to extract these stories. And the important part is that they can do it in their preferred language, and this is confidential. As the deputy mayor have seen and read the stories, we don't include the name, nothing to identify the person. The next one, please? And we have so far 134,000, 134 stories, so far. That's just the beginning. The other one, the previous one, please? No, it's okay. Just for you to understand how this committee is working, is that in the first part, we receive the stories, we collect the stories from all these communities and towns, and then in the committee, we review and analyze them, and we read all of them. And we have monthly sessions just to discuss and formulate the recommendations for municipalities or at the provincial level. And then we have the phase of the implementation. The next one, please? As you can see, this is just the beginning of the project, and we have 36 representatives in all these sessions. The next one, please? I just wanted to include some testimonials for you to see what are the barriers that women are facing in this community. It's just a glimpse for you. The important part would be the recommendations. We have so far 31 recommendations regarding housing, transportation, cultural diversity, domestic violence, et cetera. We cover different topics, and probably that would be another session for this council because it's really too big to talk about that in just 10 minutes. But the next one? This is another testimonial that I wanted to include for you to read and reflect about. The next one? And well, regarding the recommendations, one that we are discussing is because we're going to have a meeting with the Director of Transit, and of course, we think that the council of Kispemcys need to be there. We are talking about connectivity. We know that this is a pending topic and a sensitive one, because this requires budget, but also we need to connect these newcomers that are located here in this, in this town, in this region, with some other places, St. John. And the other one, for example, would be the cultural diversity. So one of the things that we suggest is cultural festivals that we discussed just last session. And we believe that this would generate the awareness and integration that we all need. Some other pending topics is domestic violence in the prevention level, and also the education program for housing providers. So if you have any questions, I'm very happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brenda, for the wonderful presentation, and certainly, the work that is being done at this time is quite incredible. I'm wondering, my question would be, are your numbers going up? We've had many newcomers from various points in the world over the past couple of years, and I'm wondering if you have seen an increase in your numbers?
We're working, we are working here in this region with the Kennepaces Regional Police Force. They are helping us a lot to, with the promotion of the project, so this area would know about our purpose, and they would participate. And we don't have that many numbers that we would like to have so far. 134 is just a low number, in my opinion, and we just have only 14 participants from Kispemcys, so we would like more, so we could have a diagnosis, a diagnosis more accurate.
Thank you very much, and I will open up for council as well. If any councillors have any questions or comments, we certainly welcome them. Councillor Olsen.
Thank you very much, your worship. Thank you very much for your presentation. It's very impressive, very comprehensive, and it seems like you're touching on all of the issues that are current and need direction on and introduction by everyone, and it's sort of an education process, I think, but I think it's very well done, and just like to congratulate you just on the breadth of the whole example, that you're a one-stop-shop for new people coming into the area, that you're willing to help them in any way, in any way they need. So you should be complimented on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Olsen. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, your worship. I was just wondering, Brenda, if you could just touch on role of municipalities when it comes to committees and boards, and how you're moving forward with that file?
I forgot to mention that, because this is just a very short time, that's why I provided some bags with our impact report and some other information that you may need to know more about our programs and services. And regarding that, there is one relevant discussion that we just had, because we believe that we need more newcomers in boards, in committees, in the council staff, in all this region, not only for the councils, but also for the agencies, the nonprofit agencies. So we believe that we need to start with that. And of course, as I mentioned, we have 31 recommendations. Not all of them are for municipalities, but if you could help us just with one, that would be amazing.
Thank you very much, and we have a motion. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Just before we wrap up, I'd like to say that I was, the last meeting we attended, it was Celebration of Mexico Day, and I think I had one of the best coffees I've ever had. Mexican coffee, who knew? It was just absolutely delicious. And thank you again for having us that night. So I'd like to put a motion forward that Ms. Diaz be thanked for her information presentation, informative presentation of which highlighted PRUD's beneficial programs and events offered to all races and ethnics in the greater St. John region. Thank you.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier and seconded by councillor Olsen on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, 6-0. Thank you very much, Brenda, for being here, and thank you for supporting Brenda this evening, and I'm sure we will hear from you again in the future. Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, and there are none, looking for a motion on the October 4th, 2022 regular meeting. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
So moved?
Minutes forwarded as presented, moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by councillor Donovan on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, 6-0. Moving on to number eight, unfinished business, I don't believe there is any correspondence, I see none, there are no bylaws this evening, new business. We're going to look at the budget line for civic relations and sponsorships and grants through the town of Kispemcys. Do we have discussion on that? Councillor Miller, would you like to open that?
Thank you, your worship. I think what I'll do is everybody's had time to look at it, so I'm going to move the council accept the finance committee's recommendations as presented for the 2023 community grants program, and the amount be included in the proposed 2023 budget. And then after a second or in the discussion, we can go through and go from there. Thanks.
Thank you. Miss councillor Miller? It's been moved by councillor Miller, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier, and on the question, councillor Olsen.
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to say that I was pleased to see the Shining Horizon operating expenses covered for $1,500. It's not as much as they asked for, but I think it's an introduction to that program, where they had a great presentation when they appeared before council in the past, and I've seen several stories on, covered by the news, showing the benefits of the using the horses for stimulus. So I was really pleased to see that. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment, councillor Olsen. The motion has been moved by councillor Miller, seconded by councillor, by Deputy Mayor Schreier. Councillor Locke, please.
Thank you, your worship. I first want to thank the finance committee. I know it's no easy task to whittle this down, so I appreciate all the effort that's gone into proposing the budget for these particulars. I have two questions, I guess a comment and a question. My first comment is, I did read that the maps that were requested, I didn't get funding this year, and that's fine, but I just wanted to point out, there was two specific requests, and it almost seems like they've been merged together. There was one request by councillor Olsen to have traditional maps made, and then I had a request that was different than a traditional map, to have not even really a street map, but just a map where someone can actually look at all the specific offerings that our town provides, like the parks and the trails, all in one map. And I'm just wondering if there's a way, because I did go on our website, and we have certain maps there with the streets, and we have maps with some of the trails, but there's nothing that kind of combines all of them. And I know we're a growing town, we have lots of newcomers to our town, and I don't know to kind of meet this need, if it would be possible to just have kind of, you know, all those things kind of merged and even just posted on our website, so that someone that's new could open up the PDF and see that we actually have, I guess it's like you don't know what you don't know. If you don't know, you're looking for Hammond River Park, or you don't know, you know, so you're looking maybe for a trail, and then you go, oh my goodness, there's a bike park right across from the beach. So it would be really nice to have something that kind of has all the key things all in one document. So I'm wondering if that could be something we could do? And I guess to build on that, I did notice, I think we only gave $1,000 to our website, and I know that that was something else that came up in previous councils around that our website is quite dated, and I'm not sure if we wanted to look at, you know, I don't know what it would cost to actually kind of revive it a bit, to make it a bit more user-friendly. I'm sure, you know, when you're on a computer, it's probably a little more user-friendly, but so many people are using their phones and tablets and things like that, and I don't actually find it's easy to find things on the website. So again, I'm wondering, when we're looking for, at funding, if $1,000 would help us accomplish that goal, especially since it is part of our strat plan in terms of communication with residents and engagement? And I guess my question, besides that, so I guess, and then I don't know who I can direct this to, but is just the rationale of $3,000 to the radio station? So if someone could just explain the rationale of that, and then also, if I could get someone, I'm not sure if it would be maybe the CAO, or I'm not sure, the Director of Community Services, if someone could also address my first comment? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Locke. I'm going to go to acting CAO, Mr. Kennedy, and give him an opportunity to speak to your points.
Thank you very much, your worship, and I guess the simple response to councillor Locke's comments is yes on both counts. We are looking at a revamp of the website, there is some money in the budget this year, and there is an RFP that's going to be going out very soon to move forward with that. Obviously, we know that our website is old and antiquated, and certainly isn't up to Obviously, we know that our website is old and antiquated, and certainly isn't up to twenty-twenty-two standards, and certainly won't be up to twenty-twenty-three standards in a couple of months either, so we're moving forward with that. So there is some money in the budget this year to help with that. And certainly in terms of making it a little bit easier on the map, that, on the website for mapping, that's something that we'll be looking at as well. Second point was the funding to the radio station. That is a nonprofit organization that has moved from Rosay into Quispam Sis, and they're actually right here adjacent to Town Hall. They are a community partner as well. Certainly that the mayor has a strong relationship with the folks who run that radio station. And when we need to get information out to their listeners, they're more than happy to do that for us. They actually did one of our bus runs on the Comex with the mayor and Councilor Bigger. Can't remember if there was another counselor on there that morning, or if there was, I apologize. And they are certainly community-minded, so that was a request that came through our community grants program that met the qualifications, the application guidelines, and it met that criteria. So it was put forward, and the finance committee came through with that amount that you see before you tonight. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. And on that, I would just like to say that the the application period, of course, is over now. For anyone that was looking for funding or grants for the twenty-twenty-three year, anything coming in now will go towards the twenty-twenty-four application process. So we have the motion moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question. Any more? Councilor Donovan.
Thank you. Just in the civic relations part, there's council advertising marked for two thousand dollars. I don't know what council advertising is. Somebody could explain that. Thanks.
Thank you, your worship. We haven't done a whole lot of that recently with the previous council and the previous mayor. That was more of a priority to put things in the local newspaper, Happy Thanksgiving, Happy Easter, Merry Christmas, those sorts of things. Basically, we've sort of moved that now to more of a, of an online presence, and we haven't really been doing that as much as of late. And certainly, we would never, probably under any circumstances, take such an advertisement out in the newspaper at this point in time, where it's a provincial paper, obviously, so there's just that money is there just in case there are other things that come up. Sometimes throughout the course of the year, somebody can come forward with either tickets for some sort of charitable event, or maybe if it's not tickets, it's a full-page ad in a program. I know that the Greater St. John Sports Hall of Fame right now is soliciting advertisements. We have a small ad in there for the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar cost, but it's good to have that money there just in case there are things that come up over the course of the year that council might be interested in supporting. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. On the question. Everyone has asked and is satisfied. Please vote now. Civic Relations Sponsorships and Grant Budget has been moved and carried, six-zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item eleven-B, Serenity Heights Subdivision Phase Three, Council Ascent for Local Government Services Easement. Councilor Olson.
Yes, I would like to move the council grant ascent to the Serenity Heights Phase Three subdivision plan, so the development officer can approve the plan and the ascent of council certified under the corporate seal of the town and signed by the town clerk as per section eighty-eight-five of the Community Planning Act twenty-seventeen, Chapter nineteen, CPA, and the plan registered to the Local Government Services Easement Rights Fest to the town as per section eighty-eight-seven of the CPA.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. It's been moved by Councilor Olson. Seconded by Councilor Miller on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, six-zero. Onto number twelve, reports. Councilor Locke.
Thank you, your worship. I do have a question. I'm just trying to find where it is in the report that we, so it's under Local Governance, I think, Local Governance Reform Attachment. And if I can find the page. I took a picture of it. But it basically referred to, if I can find it, so I can tell you, I think it might be. Okay, I think it's right here. So it would be on slide forty-six. When they were talking about requested changes based on feedback received. The second point said interregional cost sharing will be enabled in regulation, not forced. And I was wondering if someone could clarify what that means.
Well, under government reform, local government reform, I have been attending those meetings with the Regional Services Commission. And we will be discussing the budget tomorrow. So to answer your question as to whether or not, I think the word was forced, and that it would not be forced, my understanding is that if the budget is denied, that it will be put through by the Minister of Local Government Reform. So after my meeting tomorrow, I will have more clarity on that, but that is the best that I can do at this point in time. Councilor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. Is the intent of the Regional Service Commission to support the inclusion of capital in the facilities?
The intent is to include capital with the regional facilities. Since nineteen ninety-eight, Quispam Sis, along with the other regional partners, have been supporting the operations aspect, our portion of it, based on tax and population. And this year, under government reform, we have been asked to, or told, that capital is also going to be included for the Trade and Convention Center, the TD Station, the Aquatic Center, and the St. John Arts Center. So for those four buildings, I believe the Imperial is not going to fall under that capital request. But for those other four buildings that belong to the city of St. John, that are located in the city of St. John, yes, we are going to be asked to pay towards the capital costs. Councilor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. And kind of going on Councilor Olson's question. I don't, and Councilor Locke's, I think we're going to be forced. There won't be any agreement. My question suggestion, and I know we've talked about this before and have sent messages, and we've talked about it openly, but we need a very detailed list of the capital. But also, we need a detailed list of the last five years. I've gone through the St. John website, because I'm going through St. John website, because they're their items. I can find very little in their budgets that allocated to capital. I did find one large in the TD Station. It was for the screen, which was four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But we put in hundreds of thousands of dollars every year in the QMA and in the Qplex. I would like to see what they've done, because I don't know, without seeing any data, is if it hasn't, nothing's been put in them for years, doesn't make any sense. So this needs to be a fair process. I'm not quite sure, because we haven't got a detail on it. I know you don't have the details on it either, so it's kind of hard to vote on budgets and see things if you're just told here's a number, because somebody said so. So it would be nice to see that list. I know it's not in your control, but it's the last we heard was like four million bucks or something like that, or is coming through, and nobody knows what it's for. And who approves it? Like, for you guys to approve it, they need to see it, but also if somebody delayed thing from last year, because we've pushed things in our budgets, and we'll talk about that next week, we may push something forward a year that could be a million dollars. Did they do that, hoping that this is going to happen? Like, I have no clue. And I checked their budgets online, and again, I could find very little, so thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Miller. As I said, I do have a meeting tomorrow morning with the Regional Service Commission. And one of my notes that I have is to request the five-year, previous five years investment in capital for those four entities that I mentioned earlier. The other thing that I'm going to ask for tomorrow is for a projection through the legislated asset management plan that we've had here since twenty-eighteen. I'm going to ask for the immediate, mid-range, and up to a ten-year period, if they have that, of what their capital cost expectations are. So I do have that in my notes for tomorrow. And next, we have Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Your worship, has there been any consideration to allow us to have an extension on preparing our budgets? Seeing that we don't have an answer as to what exactly it's going to be in the budget, I thought there was a criteria allowing forty-five days for the Regional Service to review budgets before being implemented. So I just thought, we're, you know, to be fair to our staff here, trying to prepare budgets, you know, with the crystal ball when it comes to the Regional Service Commission, the numbers are, from my understanding, changing rapidly. And I'm just wondering if we could consider asking for a request for an extension.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You're absolutely right. Under the Regional Service Commission Act, there is a clause that states that the Regional Service Commission should have forty-five days to review the budget. That has not been given to us at this point. The final budget has not. In fact, we are on draft number six that has been submitted to us, and that's what we will be discussing tomorrow. We have had the question of the forty-five days raised many, many times. The Act is still being used. It has not been rescinded at this point. So my, my theory would be that, yes, we have to adhere to the Act. So if we are adhering to the Act and we do have a new budget, then we should have forty-five days on which to contemplate that, bring it before council and so forth. If that is not the case, then I would say that the Act either has changed or will change between now and the request for that to be approved. So your question of asking for an extension for when we have to have our budget completed, I guess that, I will ask that tomorrow. But if we don't have the final numbers from the government or from the RSC, as being told that capital costs now have to be included, then we cannot vote on a budget if it is not complete. So I agree with you a hundred percent, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Councilor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. Further to Councilor Miller's comments, I believe that the, when we were originally tasked with, and the neighboring municipalities were tasked with supporting the five facilities in St. John, there is legislation generated that gave guidelines and direction to all the participants. And I really feel that, that we're not getting that sort of level of service with the capital costs. And I respectfully request that, that a document be presented that provides guidelines for expenditures going forward, if and when we approve the, with, when we approve the support of capital expenditures. They just can't come in and cart launch, say, we're going to send this and spend that. There's got to be an agreement process somewhere with the partners. And I think it has to be written down and properly legislated. So whether that needs a motion or whatever, your worship, but I'd like to remove that if it's required.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. You're absolutely correct. Under the Regional Facilities Act, we are required to pay the operations. It takes a vote of the Regional Facilities Commission to allow for capital to be included. That has not happened. So, yes, it's in the Act that capital is not included in the regional facilities discussions that are, that we hold to, to finance the operating costs of the five facilities that were mentioned earlier. So if you would like to make a motion to that, I will follow through with it.
I'd make that a motion, then, your worship, that we, that we request a formal legislated document that, that clarifies the actual demand or request for the capitals, when, what's going to be covered, how much per year is a maximum or a minimum, and that, and that we get a chance to see that before any approval has been given for capital expenditures or support.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. I do have the, the Act, the Regional Facilities Act, which I can share with council. I can tell you that it has not been changed at this point, and that the Regional Facilities Commission is following the Act. This change that's coming about is through the Local Government Act under the direction of the Minister of Local Government and local government changes that are before us. So I'm looking for a secondary, I believe. Did we, oh. Councilor Olson asked for a motion to have the document for the Regional Facilities Commission to, so that he can review and, and be informed as to what exactly is being requested of the communities that are participating in paying for capital costs, or sorry, for operating costs, and wants to know if capital costs are in that, so. And it's been seconded by Councilor Donovan. Thank you, Councilor Donovan. On the question again, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. So as it stands right now, the Regional Facilities Corp. is legislated. If we add, I believe what I heard was that Councilor Olson was requesting that capital be included in the Regional Facilities Corp. legislation. No legislation, right? You're talking about, because if we add it to the actual, as it stands today as an act, you're talking about an amendment to the Regional Facility, or the Regional Facilities Corporation Act. No, Regional Facilities Corporation Act, that's what you're asking for, an amendment to that, to include capital? Is that what you're asking for, Councilor?
He, Councilor Olson, I will let you speak to that, but I, go ahead.
Thank you. No, I'm looking for clarification on what's expected of the participants to do with the covering of capital expenditures. Much like the, you know, we've generated what's, what's covered in the, what we're paying for the five municipal structures in St. John. And, yeah, and there's no, there's no description or guidelines at all on what's expected of the capital ask. So need some clarification there, something written.
So the request has been, at this point, through the Regional Services Commission, we've been told now that because the regional facilities are being moved under the umbrella of regional services, that capital costs are going to be added to the regional facilities. The regional facilities right now have, have the operating costs contributed by surrounding communities, Grand Bay Westfield, St. John, Rosay, Quispam Sis. The new kid on the block will be Hampton. And, and of course, some of the LSDs that are going to be embraced by, by Grand Bay Westfield and by the new Hampton. So what, what Councilor Olson is asking is, how are they setting this up? How are they defining what capital costs are? Is, are there any controls or limitations to, to what will have to be paid for each of these entities? Because Because, uh, you know, a- as you're well aware, many of these buildings in St. John, I believe, uh, T D Station was. Opened back in nineteen ninety-two, so we're looking at buildings that, uh, um, are aging. And as councillor Miller pointed out, he has not been able to find, and going back a couple of years as to. Capital contributions from the City of St. John, anything other than, I believe it was a large screen for the T D Station. To the tune of fifty thousand dollars or something like that, I believe, councillor. Miller, I'll let you speak to that.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Yes, uh, it was actually, I think, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was quite, quite a large amount. Um, I, I, I think also, councillor Olson, I don't know if it's, uh, prudent if we also add in there what, what constitutes a regional facility. Because right now, T D Station's a private business, basically. They rented it, Hilton takes care of it. T, sorry, the Trade Convention Center. The T D, they basically sea dogs run it and own all the concessions, from what I understand, and, and so. And now they're going to be, I've heard, I think they're, we're either trying to sell it, St. John, or now they're going to have a third party look after it. So if it's a regional facility, people have to have a say in it. Right now, we, to my knowledge, we have a board, yes, but we don't have a say. In the negotiations and what they do with the contracts, so, uh, I think whatever the R S C or R F, all the different letters that we're using. Is, um, hopefully, there will be a whole discussion on what is a regional facility, what constitutes a regional facility. When does a regional facility get shut down? You know, I, I know a lot of people like the Aquatic Center, but one point one million this year for operating. God knows what the other thing is. It's, it's a pool. It's forty years old. You know, we couldn't put a roof over our pool, apparently, because the Aquatic Center was there, so. That's what I was told many years ago. So the thing is, some of these things have to have an end of life. And, and, and that's if they're going to take everything over, then somebody needs oversight. It has to be oversight and just not a city. It has to be the whole commission, what gets in there or not, but I think we have to look at what's in those regional facilities. It's, uh, I know we've talked about this many times, I know most people here have, but it's kind of. Fresh, we, we're talking about the same thing, and we're on version number seven, and we still don't know what we're doing, or six, or whatever it is. And I'm, I'm sure it's more frustrating for you, because you're actually at these meetings, but, um, we're told to do the budgets by next week and talk about them, yet we. I mean, it's still a big part of our budget, but yes, um, uh, please do your best, and I know you will and you are, so it's, it's just. Everything needs to be defined, as per councillor Olson. It has to be very well-defined. Um, right down to all the details, what's going on. Uh, I'm totally against capital. I think it should be out, but I don't have a say. The minister does. And I totally disagree with the whole way it's being done, but, um, I'm one vote, and I'm not a vote in, in provincial, I'm only a vote here, so, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Miller. Deputy mayor Schreier.
Could I hear the motion again, please, before I vote?
Through you, your worship. Moved by councillor Olson, seconded by councillor Donovan. The town requests from the Regional Service Commission, uh, the definition as to what constitutes regional facility. That was just added. Uh, and further, a formal legislative document be provided to the participating municipalities. That covers the terms and conditions of the requests for capital coverage of the regional facilities. And the municipalities be given opportunity to review said document prior to approval.
Thank you, uh, madam clerk. I, I believe that councillor Olson had also asked about the, uh, capital cost. Was that in that? Okay, all right, thank you. So, yes, so, uh, uh, thank you, councillor Miller, also for your words of encouragement. Because, uh, as I say, these, uh, these meetings are not easy, not that they have to be. But, uh, we are working with, uh, with the Regional Service Commission and the Fundy Regional Service Waste Management. And the staff there are, are being directed to take numbers and to, uh. Uh, ensure that we have the information that's necessary, but it's only as good as what the, uh, the higher level of government hands down. And, uh, it has not been satisfactory to this point.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just wasn't one, one last comment. Uh, with all due respect to yourself, I think you're put, being put in a very awkward position. To, uh, participate and vote on Regional Service Commission issues that have not been completely approved. Or agreed to by your council. So I don't think that that's, uh, that's fair. And I think that, uh, people have to remember that it's the councils in each of these municipalities that make the final decision. To allow you to do your work, which I'm sure you're going to do a fine job at, but, uh, it's not fair to put that responsibility on you. If you have a, a questionable vote by your council.
Thank you, councillor Olson. Uh, certainly, I will take to my meeting all of the comments, thoughts, and, uh. Recommendations by council here this evening. I am looking to. Okay, so on the question. It's been moved by councillor Olson, seconded by councillor Donovan. Please vote now. Local governments reform, uh, motion carried six-zero. Thank you. And on the reports. Councillor Donovan, please.
Thank you. I'd move that the, uh, reports be received and filed.
It's been moved by councillor Donovan, seconded by councillor Luck. On the question. Councillor Luck.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to follow up on a few comments that were previously made in regards to. The ability to complete our budget process in a timely fashion, when we don't actually have all the details to actually make those decisions. So I guess it's more of an operational question around next week, are we just going to plan for the worst and hope for the best? In terms of, you know, if we don't actually have the numbers, I'm not sure. We have some numbers, but again, we can't even say, well, we have to adjust those numbers. Because we don't know if there's going to be a huge ask at the end, where we're going to have to be responsible. So I guess I'm just wondering how that's going to work, and if we're trying to rush it without all the information. I'm just wondering. Thanks.
Good question. Thank you, councillor Luck. Uh, I will attend the meeting tomorrow, and I'll bring back whatever information that is pertinent to moving forward. And, uh, we are not going to stall our work. Because somebody else is, is lagging. So, uh, councillor Olson. Thank you. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried six-zero. Item number thirteen, business arising from committee of the whole. There is none. Councillor Olson.
No, I was just going to adjourn.
You may adjourn.
Thank you.
It's been moved by councillor Olson, seconded by councillor Donovan, that we adjourn this meeting for this evening. Thank you, everyone. I hope you find joy in the coming days. Have a good evening. Safe travels home. On the question. Just raise your hand if you're shut down. Motion carried six-zero. Have a good evening.